Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 22nd, 2021 St. Charles County Council Meeting. It's my father's birthday, so he turned 89 today. I know we'll do announcements later on, but that may be the nicest moment we have this evening. So I'm gonna just embrace that and love it for what it is. And I was stalling because I knew Mr. Cronin was on his way in the door. So with that, we will lead with our invocation. And thank you to Jeremy Mount from First Assembly Church, who is coming to pray for us. Welcome back. We appreciate that. And our pledge of allegiance is led by Councilman John White. So please stand and remove your cap.
You get to pray first.
Pray first? Okay, there we go.
We're gonna start on a positive note.
There we go. We'll do it. Almighty God, we come to you tonight in this hour asking for your blessings on all those who have gathered together. We ask that tonight you would lead this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for those who have been called upon to lead this great county and the communities in which we live. We give you thanks for this night. We know that you have a purpose in it. And we know that when we gather together, you always have a divine agenda. Our prayer tonight is that your will be done through this council meeting. Take what has been prepared and multiply the council's efforts as only you can. Grant them your wisdom tonight. We ask that Almighty God, you would remind us again that all of us together are not only leaders, but we're also servants. And it's our responsibility to lead our community in serving the common good of all. I'm asking tonight, Almighty God, that you would graciously grant our council members wisdom. Give them generous wisdom tonight to govern the interests and the issues of our day. Give them a sense of welfare about the true needs of our people. And give all of us together tonight the ability to work together in harmony, even when there may be honest disagreement. God, we pray tonight for the agenda that's set before them. Give our leaders the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work within our beloved county. We pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Please call the row. Jeremy, thank you.
Councilman Cronin.
Here.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
We are starting tonight with a public presentation from County Executive Steve Elman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the council. Steve Elman, I want to kind of give you an update, as I have the last two meetings, on what's been going on. And I would, of course, refer you to the things that we've
(inaudible)
I would refer you to the things that we've discussed at our previous meetings in terms of the documents and the letters. And as you know, it's been four weeks now since we first start discussing this. And there was a disagreement as to what the statutes and rules required or allowed or didn't allow. And because of that, the next week, we sent a letter to the new director of Health and Human's and Health and Senior Services, Mr. Carhoff, and reported that at the last meeting and also showed you his response, which was, please tune in. The following Tuesday, they were going to have a teleconference. Well, we did turn into that teleconference, and we were one of 856 people that were on that teleconference. And we were very hopeful that he would explain that we do have discretion to go ahead and do things less stringent than the state. After 90 minutes, they still hadn't addressed that. And in the 94th minute, I believe it was, somebody finally asked what I think was the key question. And if I could have, have a No, I need the, there you go.
The sound.
This is from the, this is from the DHSS. Pardon me? All right. What you would hear is an explanation. Somebody asked the question, which we've been asking around here, is can a school district or a public health agency go ahead and make their own rules? The answer, I believe, was an unequivocal no, that there's a state standard that everybody must follow. And they then asked Mr. Carhoff if he agreed with that, and he said it did. We were very disappointed to hear that. We talked to the superintendents. They were also very disappointed in what was said. They did talk about maybe looking into some other ways to relax this, but they weren't ready to do anything yet. So at that point, after Tuesday, I was thinking I was gonna need to come in here and tell you that we struck out. But what I did do is send an email that second, the day after, on Wednesday, to Mr. Carhoff and said, hey, we listened to your presentation, but we still want a formal response to our request, which, as you remember, was a request to go ahead and allow kids, more kids, to come back to school. It's something that the superintendents had all agreed. It was a good idea. They were all in favor of it. We liked it. Sarah liked it. And basically, again, we were disappointed. On Thursday, Friday morning, at 10 o'clock, we finally, well, shouldn't say that, on Thursday, I got together with the executive from Jefferson County, Mr. Gannon, the presiding commissioner from Franklin County, myself, and together, we called the governor's office and asked for an appointment to talk to the governor about this issue and whether or not we, in fact, could have a more leeway on this. Now, Here's what we got on 10, at 10 o'clock on Friday morning. We got a letter, and I've, y'all have just received a copy of it. And this basically says, if an LPHA, that's Local Public Health Agency, desires to recommend more stringent criteria based on local considerations due to jurisdictional vaccination and positivity rates, they are authorized to do so. Now, this didn't help our cause because this talks about it's more stringent. Doesn't say only more stringent, but it says more stringent. But what it does tell us is what they're looking at. They're looking at jurisdictional vaccination and positivity rates. Given that, we put together some of, some of the numbers here. In terms of vaccination, that number, those numbers on the top are the completed vaccinations by total population in the county. And you can see we're number two. We're two tenths of a percent behind St. Louis County. At the bottom of the slide there, this is the completed vaccination for those who are 12 years or older, because those are the only ones who are actually eligible to receive a vaccination. And you can see with that particular, we're number one. So if what the, what they're looking for is this, we are, if anybody is in a position to do less, I would argue it was us. Positivity rate is the other thing that they mentioned. And as you can see, when this discussion started, we were at 12.39, and now we're at 8.18, which, again, is, is, is a real improvement. Right now, hospitals, we have 82 people in the county that are hospitalized, 34 of them in ICU, 19 intubated, but none of them are under 20 years of age. So we're, we're in good shape as far as hospitalizations with our, with our children. So given those facts, and given the fact that other people have, have gone ahead and done a less stringent protocol, we have decided to rely on this, which was also in Mr. Carhoff's letter, says, "The final determination of a close contact and the recommendation for isolation or quarantine is up to the discretion of the LPHA, based on the findings of the case investigation and contact tracing conducted in collaboration with the school." So that is the, I think, we are going to, we're going to go ahead and rely on that information. And we have, in fact, we have, in fact, gone ahead and instructed the schools. As of Friday, we told them we were gonna do it. We had a meeting at 4:00 today with them. They are free to go ahead and institute a new policy tomorrow, which will allow more kids to come back in the school. Now, the other thing we're gonna do, and, and I know Mr. Cronin brought this up a couple of meetings ago, and I think he, I think he made a good point. We're gonna make an even greater effort here to communicate with the superintendents and through the superintendents with their boards on a weekly or, if need be, a daily basis to find out if these trends, which look good right now, to find out if they're, if they continue. And if they do continue, hopefully then we can go ahead and adopt even less stringent policies. God forbid, if they go in the other direction, we'll have to respond to that as well. It's all I can promise you all and the people in the audience here is that we, in the administration, are doing everything we can to keep as many kids in the classroom in a safe way. And, and again, a lot will depend on what happens, and we will keep you informed as we go forward. And, but right now, we went ahead and instituted what the superintendents asked us to do, and which we agreed to almost four weeks ago now. And we will be updating that as we move forward. And I will go ahead and sit down now. I'm sure you'll have a discussion on this issue. Thank you.
Are you open to questions?
Sure.
Steve, what does this mean when you said the positivity rate is 8.1%? Positivity rate to what?
The positivity rate for, for tests.
No, but what's the measure? What's the measure? 8.8, 8, when it's 1.2?
Well, let's put this way. It was 25 last November. It's, it was 12 when we started. Joanne, what, what was it during the summer?
It ran, I mean, it was up and down during the summer, but I think the height of it was about
The good news is it's on the way down. Now, again, can it go the other direction? Yes. Has it in the past? Yes. But right now, it's going in the right direction.
When you ask the question that you're doing
What you're saying is, is the health department is gonna do this because you want to make sure the kids are safe, right? That they're, they're, so we had no one under the age of 10 die of COVID, and no one's in a hospital from, under the age of 20. So keep them safe from what?
But maybe, maybe the result that you're talking about was, maybe the outcome you're talking about was the result of the fact that we have been isolating and quarantining.
No. The other, the other thing I said is you say that we got 52% vaccination. Are you suggesting that the kids in the school should be vaccinated more? I mean, are you, are you suggesting that in order to get to a safer place, that, that, that the kids should be vaccinated more?
No.
Folks, please.
What I'm trying to do is figure out
No, that's why I put up Mr. Carhoff's language.
I understand.
He said that in making this decision, that is one of the things that we should look at. All right. So if you don't think it's one of the things we should look at, you can talk to Mr. Carhoff about it. But right now, that's what, in his letter to us, said that's one of the things that we should look at.
Okay, so I got this question, Mr. Elman, is if, if
You can call him, Steve.
Okay, Steve, there's, you got Jefferson County, St. Francis County, Perry County, Joplin County, Madrid, Camden Towne County. Those school districts completely modified, modified their quarantine rules. And this resolution that we're trying to adopt, the substitute resolution, is stating that if you are in, if you test positive, if child test positive, then the people who would be contact traced close to them, have close contact, would have to wear a mask for that quarantine period unless they showed symptoms or tested positive. Then they would be, you'd have to be quarantined. So that's what we're trying to do with this resolution. We're trying to have some leadership in our county to go in a positive direction to keep these kids from leaving school. This does nothing for our kids. You're, we're pushing the buck to the LPHA, whoever the hell they are. This should be made out of our local health department.
Have you read the letter to Mr. Carhoff?
Steve runs the local health department.
It set out
He does.
I like to talk, dude.
The letter set out what the
I don't care what that guy says. I don't care what he says.
Joe, you asked a question. Let him answer. Let him answer his question. You asked. The browbeating doesn't get us anywhere. If you really want information, then ask and let him answer.
Here's what I want to know.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What do you think our isolation policy should be?
It should be none. I mean, it should be none.
Guys, this is not an interactive meeting right now.
And here's the thing, Steve, is this is why we're here where we are, because I sent out to you and the county council multiple questions, multiple times, the same question five times about contact tracing. What are we doing prior to school starting? Zero. Crickets. No answers. Until one of the women out here had, linear one, had to do a Freedom of Information Act to get the facts that we're looking for. We got the facts that we're looking for, and it's exactly where we thought it was gonna be, where you got to, you got 20, 30,000 kids being quarantined with a 1.2 positivity rate. If any of us had a job and we were 98.8% wrong, we'd be
We've been talking about quarantine. My question was about what is our isolation policy, and you're saying we should
I asked that question, Steve, five times, and no one ever, I said, what exactly
No, I asked you what you think it should be, and you said there should be no isolation policy.
That's correct.
So a kid who's infected should go back to school?
No, no, no. If a kid is sick, if you got the flu, you got a cold, you got a sore throat, you should stay home. That's what parents do, that keep their kids at home when they're sick.
Well, that's what, that's what isolation is. And you said, you said that there should be no, no restriction.
No, I'm talking about the contact tracing. When you have
Okay, but I asked about isolation.
I am talking about what we're doing
On isolation, you agree we should keep those kids home?
If they're sick, they should stay home, yes.
Well, that's, that's the isolation.
No, Steve, but what I'm talking about is the, in the health department, what they do is they do contact tracing.
What I asked you about was isolation.
Everybody in that classroom has to go home.
Enough. Mr. Cronin.
What do you mean enough? This is important, Mike. This is important, okay? You guys know to blow this stuff off all the time.
You're not the only one who gets to answer questions.
This is my resolution, and I want some respect, all right?
Mr. Cronin is on your resolution. So Mr. Cronin has a question as well.
I have a question. I want to say something in support. I wrote the first resolution in conjunction with Rory. Joe, we consulted you on it, but I wrote the resolution. Resolution had three purposes. One is stated right up there. And the last, the last line on that screen is most important, "In collaboration with the school." We really didn't able to do that too well before. The state was telling you what to do. The LPHA is the local public health authority, which is our health department. So before the state would tell us what to do, the LPHA would do that, there wasn't as much interaction as there has been lately with the, with the school superintendents. Fair statement? Okay?
That's a fair statement.
So I'm very encouraged by this because I see collaboration with the school, and we didn't have that before. So now the county health department, along with the county executive, can reach out to the superintendents and see what works in some districts and what doesn't work in other districts. And this is just to start. We just laid the groundwork for a better cooperation and cooperation between the health authorities, the state, and the schools. So I'm very encouraged by this because the state, if, correct, the state bent. They gave, they gave up quite a bit. And you're willing to consider modifications and recommendations of the school superintendents. So I think we're on the right path. This thing ain't over. We've got a few more years of this, more than likely. So if you think COVID's gonna be going away next week, I'm, I'm sorry. Anyway, I think you've laid the groundwork to do, to, for, for moving forward with this, and I'm, I'm happy that you did what you did.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Well, again, I understand, you know, we may have disagreements about the quarantine policy, but on isolation, we need to keep the kids who are infected, we need to keep them out of schools. Thank you.
We'll move on to conditional use permits. Bill's for final passage, Bill number 4992.
Bill number 4992, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 21-14, for a conference event lodging center to Edgewood Highway 94, Number 2 LLC and Zero Church Street LLC property owners and applicants.
This was already, the public record on this is closed, so we won't be doing comments on this, so please call the row.
Councilman Brazel may have a comment.
I'd like to add a condition, if that's possible, to add a condition to
Oh, sorry.
There was, one of the biggest issues was a helipad. He agreed not to do the helipad. So I'd like to have in a condition, Rory, if this is okay, require no helicopter traffic other than third-party use for medical evacuations at the subject property at any time. Is that okay?
Are you making a motion?
That's a motion for a condition, if it's okay to put that in there as a condition.
Can you define helicopter traffic?
Well, he, people are concerned that he's gonna have his helicopters at, at Washington Airport and fly around and disturb people's peace, you know?
Right. So the reason that I was asking is when this came up, and I believe Rory can clear this up for me, we don't have power over where he flies the helicopter. That's all under FAA. FAA determines flight paths for the helicopter. So you're, you're welcome to put
No, I understand. That's a good, that's a good point.
But that's not within our scope of power, so FAA controls flying.
That's a good point. So we could say no helicopter landing on the property.
No.
Yeah?
No. You can't, you can't do that.
Unless it's an emergency.
I know enough about flying. You can't do that. Okay? That's FAA realm. That's not our realm. Okay?
Is that, is that accurate?
I, I mean, I Can you, can you restate your question, council member?
Can we? The concern is the helicopter traffic. So we don't have helicopters flying around and looking at us like we're fishing a fishbowl. So what we'd like to do is put, require no helicopter landings. I guess landings, it says traffic, but that, Mike's right, it'd say helicopter landing on property unless otherwise used for medical evacuations at the subject property.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Chief Fris was the person that I called and asked him about that. Chief, can you come up and enlighten us perhaps a little bit? In his previous job, he was in charge of the, of the helicopters that we shared with St. Louis County, and he knows a lot more about helicopters than anybody else I know.
Before you answer him, I don't think Mr. Brazel means to exclude emergency landings.
No, I just, no, no.
Yeah, he did say that.
Yeah. I think, I think it challenges, you're right. You can't control the airspace. The FAA does that. As far as my concern would be, this is private property, and can the council say what you can do and can't do on private property? I know some jurisdictions, like the city of Clayton, they have a landing restriction for the entire city, that the clearance has to be approved by the chief of police there, or there's, there's authority there that has to approve it. Even as the police helicopter pilot, I had to get permission from the chief of police to land in the city of Clayton. They granted it. But I think I tread lightly on, can you restrict what goes on if this is his private property? Can he land his helicopter on his private property?
Well, but that's, that's what we're doing now. We're putting conditions all over. It's his private property.
But I, I think, if I can restate, I think what Chief is saying is you can't legally put that restriction on this property since it's his property and his helicopter. Rory?
So it's my understanding that because this is CUP, we're only allowing permitted uses, and because it is not a permitted use to land, to land a helicopter, then that is not something that you need to add as a condition. So it is all, that is just the, they withdrew their requests, my understanding, for the, the landing pad. So right now, if it is silent as to helicopters, then there is no need for you to add a condition with respect to that.
Because it's not a permissible use
Correct.
In the current CUP.
Because it's an ag, ag district, ag zone.
Okay, turn off. That's good.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think that during planning and zoning, you know, I think it became very obvious.
obvious, you know, that, Joe, that we were, that the people on planning and zoning and all the, you know, was totally against that, and then, you know, and again, you have to take the man for his word, when he wrote that letter to us, he, he almost apologized for, you know, putting the plan for a helipad there, so I, I think we have to take him at his word now, and I don't know if we have any control over, you know, flying helicopters around your district.
No, that's fine. All right, good enough.
The only reason that I would think that might be a problem is, years ago, when I used to work at KSD, Alan Barclage used to land the jetcopter right behind the studios in the middle of Creve Gore. So if he could land it on our property in Creve Gore, I can't imagine we're going to be able to stop a guy from being able to land it out in, out in the middle of your area because there's lots of farm. So, you withdraw?
Yes, I withdraw the motion, yeah.
Very well. Any other? Would that please call the roll?
Bill number 4992, in ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 21-14, for a conference event lodging center to Edgewood Highway 94, Number 2 LLC and Zero Church Street LLC property owners and applicants. Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Conditional use for 4992 passes on to conditional use 4985.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw that from the table and bring it forward.
We have a motion made. Do you have a second? Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is back on the table. Mr. Cronin, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, this is a tough one, so, I have no other comments on it.
With that, I would ask you to call the roll.
Bill number 4985, in ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 21-08, for an outdoor storage yard for automobiles, boats, trucks, trailers, and recreational vehicles to Howard Chilcutt Trust property owner and KJ Storage LLC applicant.
You calling the roll?
After discussion, if you have any-
Is there any more discussion?
No.
No.
Bill number 4985, in ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 21-08, for an outdoor storage yard for automobiles, boats, trucks, trailers, and recreational vehicles to Howard Chilcutt Trust property owner and KJ Storage LLC applicant. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Elam.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilman Schneider.
No.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Bill number 4985 fails, and that gets us to our public hearing for setting the 2021 tax rate. Anyone to speak on this public hearing?
Arne DiNoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. AC DiNoff, county public advocate, and I'd like to put some comments on the record about the 2021 tax levy. I'll wait till you gentlemen are finished.
I've got other stuff than listening to you all day.
Well, you know what? I'm a valued citizen.
I've been doing it for ten years, I ain't taking no more.
I'm a valued citizen, you need to listen to the residents.
Yeah.
So, thank you. First of all, on the tax levy, according to my digestion of the information, that there's going to be no increase or no decrease. I'd like to eliminate the dispatch and alarm tax levy, that would be .0382 cents per 100 assessed evaluation. It's very little money that we take in revenue, it's actually costing us a lot more money at administering it and collecting it. Number two, it should be a total county function, and I'm asking that we consolidate all of our five large municipality dispatch centers and our county dispatch centers into one dispatch center located at the Emergency Operations Center that we just spent 25, 30 million dollars building next to the county police department. So I'm asking for consolidation. Having, from that consolidation, intergovernmental agreements will make up any difference in the loss of those revenues, which has been, which have been depleting each and every year because landlines are going to the wayside, and I believe our county only has 15% to 20% landlines, so that's what the decrease of that fund, a dramatic decrease, has been over the decades. I would also ask that the county council and the county administration use all increases in new residential and new commercial development for a special fund to finance and to build, for building capital improvements of the county buildings, as you want to spend 75 to 125 million dollars in renovating our county jail, I would ask you start preparing for that rather than asking for a tax increase of our 430,000 county residents. And the other part of creating that capital improvement fund, using that new growth of residential and commercial development, will also rebuild our roads and rebuild our bridges. It will be substantial income for generations to come. I ask you hold the line on any new increases in the tax levy. We have a tremendous growth in sales tax increase revenue, even despite COVID and COVID-related activities. Our sales tax are going up and up, increasing each and every year. Our county is growing each and every week residentially with new residents, and every week commercially, those new taxes are coming online to service county services. We need to be fiscally conservative and spend all of our tax levy monies wisely and for worthwhile projects. I would recommend, instead of the finance director's recommendation, that we decrease the tax levy to .1988 cents, and that would be abolishing and getting rid of dispatch and alarm tax levy, and I feel that my method and my way of moving forward is better for taxpayers and will save money in the long run. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
No further comments.
Okay. Any other comments about the public hearing? Seeing none, that will close our public hearing, and we'll move on to public comments. We have a brand-new clock, by the way, tonight, so you have three minutes to speak during public comment, and for the first time since I've been on the council, we actually have a nice big-numbered clock that will count down your three minutes, so you'll get to see your time that's going down as the news media decides to come in and get set up.
Go ahead, if you want.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
We'll, we'll wait for you if you want, you know? Are you sure? All right, man. God forbid I hold you up now, come on. So, you've got your three minutes. Typically, what we do is we do three speakers for, three speakers against on any particular issue. This is not back and forth. I know some of you are going to come with questions, and you're going to want answers, so this is not a public debate, this is your time to speak for your three minutes, say what you have to say. When the three minutes are done, I'll thank you for coming and ask you to have a seat, and we'll bring up the next speaker. So with that, we start with?
Arne DiNoff.
There you go, man.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C. AC DiNoff, county public advocate, and the first item I'd like to address is-
Mr. DiNoff, let me hold on for just a second.
Sure.
I want to make sure you get your three minutes. There you go.
Okay. First thing I'd like to address is the microphone system. There's a lot of speakers that are low speakers, and they're not using, utilizing the microphone. Not to pick on anybody, but the county counselor, I couldn't hear Mr. Sullivan talk because he's very low in voice, and he wasn't actually using the microphone. So I'm sure that my audience members would ask that you could utilize those microphones to the best of your ability, so we can participate and be part of this meeting. As I said in the last meeting two weeks ago, if we're not going to listen to our health director and our health department, then I'm asking that you, as the county council, abolish that Department of Public Health, because there's no use in having those multiple employees, I believe we have over 35 employees at the county health department, and there's no sense of employing them and spending millions upon millions of dollars of taxpayer money, not to mention the grants that we get from the state of Missouri and the United States government. So that's my point that I'd like to say again. The ferry discussion, there's a license on the agenda tonight for the Grafton Ferry. They're having some economic problems, and I got off with a meeting with the Calhoun County officials, where they want to impose or put together an economic impact study to put, put forward two free ferries, and that would allow access to Illinois, to Calhoun, and Jersey Counties. It would be a win-win for St. Charles County and those counties involved on the Illinois side, because a lot of the workers come from there. They're trying to survive, and I would like our county to participate in getting free ferries to ferry the residents from Illinois to St. Charles County and St. Charles County residents to Illinois. On the Nokia foreign corporation, the tower alternatives, why are we, why are we making a contract with a foreign company? Why aren't we investing in American companies? What's wrong with the city of Wentzville's water tower? Why do we have to build a three-fourths to a million-dollar tower in Wentzville on the Parkway when it's already on the water tower? Why don't we use that existing water tower rather than have residents look at another ugly tower? Special taxing districts, when are the NIDS, neighborhood improvement districts, community improvement districts, and transportation development districts, do they ever dissolve, or do they keep taking money from us residents year after year after year? The city of St. Charles has on the agenda once again a neighborhood improvement district, and I ask what area, because the resolution doesn't speak to that, and it doesn't say what purpose it's going to fit, but take more taxpayers' money from the people's pockets that sit behind me. Bill number 4888, the storage lot, Mr. Cronin, Councilman Cronin, you're speaking for others when they are adamantly opposed to the project, and you have no right to speak for the Wentzville-appointed and elected officials. I said the Board of Alderman meeting on Wednesday-
Mr. DiNoff, your time has expired. Thank you for coming and speaking.
And they were appalled that you were speaking for them. Thank you.
It was our next speaker.
Janine Rallo Nesslidge.
Janine?
Thank you, council, for seeing me. My name is Janine Rallo Nesslidge, and I am an educator. I've been an educator for 23 years, and I feel like I'm a very respected educator. I have won, not that I usually brag about my accolades, but I've been, I've won Teacher of the Year twice in two different school districts, and I was even voted Student Teacher of the Year by my student body. I'm here today to talk to you about mandates and quarantines and masks altogether. Basically, I just want to give you a small peek of what I see being an educator in a building where students are forced to wear masks or have to go home for 10 to 13 days and miss school and watch videos in order to learn, and most kids do not learn that way. The average student does not learn by sitting on a computer and listening to a teacher talk or filling out questions. They, they need to engage with their teachers. What I've seen is countless amount of kids failing classes that normally wouldn't fail classes that are decent students. I've seen students fall behind to where now they are not going to graduate on time. It's caused too many students to lose athletic and academic scholarships. It causes principals to spend 75% of their time on contact, on contact tracing. It's caused fear in my students when they see a principal come into a classroom with a six-foot board, and they all cross their fingers and pray that, oh, gosh, I hope it's not me. Kids do not want to be out of school. They want to be in school, they want to learn, and when kids are mandated to quarantine, it's hurting them. I, I talk about the definition of health in my classes and talk, talk about how health is not just physical, it's mental, it's social, and these kids are in a situation where their hands are tied and they're being forced to leave school when they don't want to. Lastly, masks mandating affects the mental health of my students. We have high level, the highest levels of anxiety and depression that I've ever seen in my 23 years. I'm speaking in hopes that I've given you some insight of what it looks like from an educator's perspective, that spends seven hours a day with my students, and I'm hoping that you can do something about the mandates with quarantines and masks. That's all I ask. Thank you.
She's waiting for you to start.
Oh, okay. I'm Jen Olson, and I'm a resident of Wentzville. I just want to make a quick note about the positivity rates that Mr. Alman mentioned, 25% in November of 2020. That's when everybody was masked, and they were 12 in August, when nobody was in school, and then 8% with children in school unmasked for the most part. I think the logic says that masks are not necessary for school-aged children. The risks related to masking and quarantining, quarantining children far outweighs any perceived benefits. These kids are suffering emotionally, mentally, physically, scholastically. This is lasting and irreversible harm. Kids are not super spreaders, nor are they at risk of becoming severely ill or dying from COVID. In fact, the flu is more harmful to them than COVID. My child has a respiratory issue since she was six months old. I've given more breathing treatments than I can even count. This is a reality of my life, and I don't impose a burden on anyone else for the sake of my own comfort or to calm my own fears. In the beginning of COVID, I locked my house down from March until June. We took every precaution possible. When I emerged from my doomsday bunker, I did so knowingly, knowing that I can't control anyone, not because it's difficult, but because I don't have the right to do so, and neither does anyone in this room. You don't have the moral or legal authority to force me or anybody else to wear a mask, to quarantine, to be tested, or to be vaccinated. Not now, not ever. We voluntarily allow you, allowed you to shut us down in early 2020 for 15 days so we could slow the spread, not stop it. We did not sign up for the tyranny that we're witnessing right now. We didn't agree to this, we were forced into it when our school boards and elected officials decided that they were going to force us into submission. I came here tonight to ask each of you a few simple questions. I understand this is a one-way conversation right now, so I encourage you to just let these questions simmer in your hearts and minds. Mr. Alman, at the last meeting, you stated that not following the guidance of the health department could result in you being charged with a misdemeanor. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I assume that that's part of what's causing hesitation for you when it comes to ending the masking and quarantining. And my question for you is, why aren't you willing to do that? There's not a parent in that room that wouldn't take a misdemeanor to protect their child. To the council members, who are you scared of? You have the power to end this, and doesn't it scare you more to know that you're partaking and stripping Americans of their basic individual liberties? You are potentially destroying the fabric of this country by allowing tyranny to take root. Most of you will be dead and gone when our children and grandchildren are fighting another bloody war to undo what's been done.
Thank you for coming.
This would be the third against any type of mask mandate, unless I've read these cards wrong. Is anyone here to speak in support of mask mandates?
Okay.
Then the third against mask mandates is David McFarland.
My name is Dave McFarland, and Terry Hollander is my rep, and I'm a systems engineer. And I've got two scientific studies that explain in great detail why masks don't work. And I've, and I've also got plenty of data that shows why mask mandates in general don't work by comparing states and countries, but I'm not going to go into that now. What I really want to get to is these two studies. So the mask filtration problem is a physics and aerodynamics problem, and so it's not a biology problem, it's not a health problem, it's a physics problem, because the masks, the masks were designed for, to prevent bacterial infection and dust. They were not designed to prevent virus infections. Virus particles are very much smaller than bacteria. So while a surgical mask will work to prevent bacteria in hospitals, they're very ineffective at screening out viruses. And so I'll openly, and I have these PDFs, so I can give you the documents themselves and all the data, and discuss in great detail why this works, and I'll get the bottom line here. The results show that a standard surgical and three-ply cloth mask, which see current widespread use, filter at apparent efficiencies of only 12.4% and 9.8% respectively. Apparent efficiencies of 46.3% and 60.2% are found for KN-95 and R-95 masks respectively, which are still notably lower than the verified 95- which are still notably lower than the verified 95% rated ideal efficiencies. Furthermore, the efficiencies of loose-fitting KN-95 and KN-95 masks equipped with a one-way valve were evaluated showing that a one-way valve reduces the mask apparent efficiency by more than half, down to 20.3%, while loose-fitting KN-95 provides a negligible apparent filtration efficiency of 3.4%. The present results provide an important practical contrast to many other previous experimental numerical investigations which do not consider the effect of mask fit when evaluating effectiveness. Now, think about that. It's mask fit that's causing the leakage. And think about all these kids running around with masks. How likely is it those masks are going to stay fitted for any length of time? So unless the teacher is willing to check the mask fit every five minutes, you're wasting your time. Now, interestingly enough, the study points out that the most effective thing you can do for preventing COVID in an indoor situation is ventilation. So if you ensure ventilation, if you set up some sort of ventilation, a system with HEPA filters in it, that reduces the transmission of COVID fairly significantly, and I can give you the actual numbers, but I'm out of time. But I've got all kinds of data and more documents.
You can't just send that to the council. You can't just email that information that you have to the council and then we'll have access to it.
Okay.
Thanks.
On Resolution 2110, Robert Bazell.
Do you want him to fix the mic before you start?
Hello? Yeah, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Hi, everyone on the council. Thanks for having me tonight. I know some of you here, I'm here, as you know, against mandated vaccines. We like to go with what the Health Department says, but I've told you guys this before. My child couldn't get into daycare or school without her vaccines. We didn't want to do it, but we had to to get her into school. Within hours, she had her first seizure. Within five days, she couldn't walk and talk. She ended up having 130 seizures on a 30-minute EEG and I was told she was going to die by the age of three in her sleep and no medication will help her. And so if that's something we're going to listen to, the Health Department, everyone in this room let my child down, do not let other children down. You cannot mandate death and permanent paralyzation and find any numbers to justify that. It's evil, it's wrong, and it's not going to be accepted whether it's in this world or the next. You guys need to understand, this is not a game to me. It might be, we can make politics out of health all we want, but the fact is, this vaccine is killing people, it's paralyzing people, and I'm actually having a conversation about if we're going to mandate it before you guys ever have a conversation about holding vaccine manufacturers liable for killing and paralyzing people. Where is that? At what point are lives going to be put over money? I mean, there's no other product on the market that you can find that can kill and paralyze you and then just say, tough luck. We didn't get any justice, my family. The Health Department let us down without a doubt because if they didn't have that mandate for her to get into school, she wouldn't fight seizures the rest of her life. This is wrong and I just pray, I know we started, you know, die will be done, God's, his will is never going to be to mandate something that's going to kill and paralyze people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lyndi Williford. So we appear to be back to this little shell game you all are playing with our children's freedoms and education. So we appear to be back to this little shell game you all are playing with our children's freedoms and education. It's pretty disgusting. Hot potato, you do it, you do it, you do it. We've played this game for 18 months. Mr. Elman, what is the discretion of the LPHA? You gave us no information tonight, just that the can's going to get kicked again while our kids are suffering and you guys are all going to try to figure it out. How long are we going to play this game, another 18 months? I want you to know that some children are already on their second quarantine and we are only 24 days into the school year. They are missing homecoming and sports and band performances that they have worked so very hard for. Joe, I know you're trying and I appreciate you. I know they aren't letting you do anything. And really, you guys passed a resolution in May that our county executive completely ignored anyway. So even if you got something through, he doesn't like to follow it, doesn't like to follow what his council puts in front of him. He's made that very clear. I would just like to ask you guys why you're not holding him accountable for that. Mr. Elman, will you please address the real issue of the overreaching and unconstitutional quarantines that your Health Department is giving our kids? You said the word isolation. That's a scary and harmful word to use about our kids. Why did the Health Department take suicide rates off their website? I just had the Sunshine Data again that should be readily available to parents as we watch our kids struggle. Holding our kids' education hostage is not what you were elected to do or what any of you were elected to do. So I ask you guys to please stop the shell game. Please stop the little hopes of freedom crumbs that our kids can go back to school. It's time to make a decision. It's time to let our kids have an education. It's time to preserve their freedoms and their liberties. Thank you.
On Erosion and Heritage Landing, Jim Rutherford.
I wanted to take this opportunity, John, after I was here last time, the response that the county gave to the subdivision out there with Mike, John, and the county engineers and stuff was appreciated very much that we were noticed and I wanted to take this time to thank you also, John. I know you were involved with getting the exits and off-ramps there at Heritage Landing. Thank you. But we're not done yet. What I wanted to talk to you about this evening is they did tear the house down yesterday, was complete, and they've started to rework the property there. And I would just ask the county that in the rebuilding of that, that the bank that owns the property now, there is an engineering report that says how this is to be fixed. And we just would like if they are going to pass that property on or something that planning and zoning or somebody would make sure that that wall is built properly because as I understand it now, they've delivered dirt and some chat that they're going to try and throw in a ditch and call it good. And I don't know if that needs to happen. Now, there's no need for an easement for the county to fix the broken sewer, the broken pipe there, so that should be open and done. And I'd like to keep the communication lines open with you if we may and get that done and we do appreciate everything you guys are doing here. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Final speaker.
That was the final speaker? All right. So with that, that will close public comment. We'll move on to oral report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, just to make a few clarifications. First of all, at the last meeting, I pointed out that there's a criminal statute, but it would not hold me responsible, it would hold the Director of Public Health responsible. It would hold the Director of Public Health criminally responsible. She's a very committed young lady who, whether you agree with what she does or not, works very hard. And that's why I felt we needed to at least ask the Director and get his okay to do something. And now, at that point, you know, if something were to happen, if she were to be charged, she could show that she was acting in good faith. And that's what we were trying to get from the Director of Health, and we did. And I know that there's people here that are not going to be happy with the changes here that the superintendents have asked us to make and they're going to want us to go further. But I'm afraid some people don't understand, we are going to make it easier for some kids to get back in school. And the only, I'm sorry, what?
I don't know.
The only other thing is, Mr. Bazell left and I'll communicate this to him. I've known his family for a long time and I'm very familiar with his situation with his daughter. But that vaccination requirement, as you all remember from last year, that's a state requirement. Remember, we had people that didn't want us to report to the state and under the statute we were supposed to do that. And like I told people then, if you don't like that, you need to talk to the state representatives and senators because that's not a local requirement, that is in the state statute.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. That would move us down to resolutions. Resolution 2110.
Sponsored by Joe Cronin and Joe Brazel. A resolution of the St. Charles County Council opposing government-mandated COVID-19 vaccination. Whereas on September 9th, 2021, President Jeff Farbiden announced plans to direct the U.S. Department of Labor's Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, to keep an emergency temporary standard, ETS, directed at private sector businesses with 100 or more employees to require their employees to either be vaccinated against the COVID-19 virus or require any workers to remain unvaccinated to produce a negative test result on at least a weekly basis before coming to work. And whereas it is anticipated that the OSHA ETS will impact over 80 million workers and whereas private sector employees are already overburdened with unnecessary regulations and whereas the St. Charles County Council believes that medical treatment and preventative measures are an individual choice and that the federal government has no role to play in mandating COVID-19 vaccinations and whereas St. Charles County has led a successful campaign to make sure that residents of the county who want to be vaccinated against the COVID-19 virus have that option and have vaccine available to them and whereas every citizen who wants a COVID-19 vaccine should have the ability to obtain one, but no COVID-19 vaccine should be mandated by law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles, Missouri as follows. Section 1. The St. Charles County Council expresses its opposition in the strongest possible terms to COVID-19 vaccine mandates. Section 2. The St. Charles County Council continues to encourage all those citizens who make the individual choice to get vaccinated against the COVID-19 virus to do so and to avail themselves of the many opportunities to receive the vaccine.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin.
No.
The key thing to this resolution is no COVID vaccine should be mandated by law. Okay? That's what it states. Federal government says you employ more than 100, you got to get your workers vaccinated. Workers don't want to get vaccinated. We have a problem with that. And just the May resolution of this council was brought up earlier and I just want to read a section of that real quick. This was passed by the council in May and it says, "This county council has not issued any mask mandates or contact tracing or quarantine orders to school district." We don't do that, this council. Okay? So what we're talking about is state orders, okay, and the LPHAs' orders with schools and we are working on resolving that real hard. Mr. Elman's done a great job working on that and I know you folks aren't happy with it yet, but the collaboration and cooperation between the school districts and the Health Department and county government is just starting. Give it a little time, it's going to get relaxed. It may not get relaxed as much as you want, but they're working on it, okay? So beyond that, beyond that, I just go back to this subject. This is just against the federal mandate for vaccinations for employers of 100 or more. And that's all I have.
Mr. Hammond.
Yeah, I've been sitting here for the last few meetings and listening, I haven't said a word, but I can tell you, the county government has never mandated masks. We didn't shut down businesses like other counties did and we've not taken away anybody's freedoms and nor would I ever vote to do that. So I, there is not going to be a mask state that I will ever vote for, a requirement to require people to get vaccinated. And that's just the way it is.
Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, just a couple of things on what Mr. Cronin just said about our resolution. The intent of our resolution was to say to the Health Department to cease and desist all activity towards schools. Don't give conca-tration, don't recommend mask mandates, don't recommend quarantines of any kind, but that's not what they're doing. And it is the county executive that runs the Health Department, Dave. There are seven counties or more in this county, in this state, that did cease and desist all activity with their Health Department towards schools. And so it is a leadership decision. And I have a 12-year-old. I don't know if anybody on this dais has anybody in school, school-aged kids, and I also have two grandkids and Frances Howe. I've never seen it's so dysfunctional and the tyranny is so bad. And I think that the schools have no clue what to do because our Health Department is giving them horrible leadership. So with this, this is, I just wanted to talk about that because he brought it up. I know it's not part of our resolution, but on this resolution, what people have to know is the mainstream media is a problem in our country. There's been over 45,000 people died three days after the vaccine, which is a fact. There are lawsuits, this is a fact. What that gentleman talks about is not an uncommon occurrence. There's over 690,000 permanent injuries or injuries to people from this vaccine. So there are real problems with it. If someone chooses by doing their own research to get a vaccine, that's fine. If that's what you want to do, do it. But if you choose not to, then you should not have to do a vaccine. And that's as simple a decision. When did we ever give up those kind of rights? When did we start mandating these kind of things? What it's doing is it's turning all of us against each other. It's the vaccinated against the unvaccinated and that's exactly what it is. It's divide and conquer. And I'm telling you right now, it's a big, big problem. And you see it in schools now. You see some kids wear masks, some kids don't, and it's becoming a huge problem to their mental well-being and to being friendly and kind and it's just awful. This is the worst thing, I'm 57-years-old, that I've ever seen in my life. This county council is used to dealing with planning and zoning issues and things like that, budgetary items. This is life and death stuff. This is talking about with kids and talking about trying to freedom and liberty. And I am so confused and perplexed by how this county council and county executives behave on this. And I know they don't like my tactics, I get that. I'm just at the level of frustration where I've never been before. So I apologize for my rudeness to you guys, I just don't know what else to do. I am lost here. So we will pass this resolution. This is a simple one because I know they're all going to agree with it, but what the real problem is, is how our Health Department is treating our children. That's the worst part, right there. It's child abuse is what it is.
Yeah, any questions or comments on this?
No, I think it's pretty obvious that we all agree that the federal government does not have the right. Now, how you feel on vaccinations, I think everyone has their own feelings and I think everybody has a right to have those feelings and express them in any way you wish, but I think this is going to be the first seven-to-zero vote you're going to see on months and months and months of this conversations on some of these issues. But I think we all agree that the central government has no business telling us and mandating vaccinations. That's a personal decision that people should make.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll. Sir, this is not an interactive meeting. Please, thank you. Please call the roll.
Resolution number 21-10.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know John had a comment, my bad.
I'm just sitting here and I disagree with you, Joe.
Can you pull the?
I'm just sitting here, listening to all this and you're talking about our leadership. Mr. Elman has done more for our county than anybody's done for St. Louis County or St. Louis City. And he's really trying and people don't believe that he's trying, but I know in his heart, he wants to get kids back to school as soon as possible. So when you talk about and talk down to him and blame him for all this, it's not his fault. He's really wanting to do it. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. I think we've made a lot of progress from where we were two weeks ago. I wish we could have gotten there two weeks earlier, maybe Fort Sumot would have had a different vote at their school board meeting if we would have been there, but we're getting there and I'm encouraged by the progress and I'm encouraged by how the county executive continues to work through and try to find a solution. It may not be as timely as some people want, but I know he's getting in the right direction. So with that, let's call the roll.
Resolution number 21-10. A resolution of-
A resolution of the St. Charles County Council opposing government mandated COVID-19 vaccination. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Resolution number 2110 passes. So it gives us to tabled resolution. Do we have any action to be taken on that one?
I'd like to make a motion to pull off, pull a resolution 2110 off the table and substitute it with amended resolution 210-09.
We, so you have to do those one at a time. So I have a motion from Mr. Brazel to pull tabled resolution 2109 off the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So that's done. Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to make a motion to remove and, and not, since they remove, withdraw the resolution. I think the resolution got the intended purpose that we wanted. We wanted these decisions to be.
Wait a minute. Are you talking, the first one or the second one?
Let me finish, please. Okay?
I'm confused.
We passed the first, the other resolution. I'm talking about the resolution that was originally brought up two weeks ago, that was modified at the meeting and shows on the agenda as a substitute currently. Okay? I think the original resolution got the results we wanted. But prior to that, the county's health department could not do anything because of state orders. Due to the efforts of Mr. Elman, now the county health department can act independently of state orders, state orders, which is a huge, huge benefit to us. Then secondly, is a dialogue you heard in Mr. Elman's speech. He's already had a lot of dialogue with the school superintendents. He's, he's committed to talk to them more daily, weekly, whatever's needed, and they can communicate to their school boards to see what parents want. So we've got the foundation right now of getting this fixed. And Mr. Elman's already talked, and the health department's already talking about changing quarantine orders right now. And this is what the biggest thing is, is with the quarantines. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw the resolution and just be it known that, you know, I've been drawing a lot of resolutions lately. If this don't work the way I think it is, I'll write another one. But for right now, I think we're on the right path, and let's give the health department and the school superintendents a little time to work together and maybe figure out something that's truly best for the kids' education.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please.
Mr. Cronin has a motion on the table.
What, can I have a point of order first?
Mr. Chairman, I move to concur.
I, I want to know what he's talking about. Is he talking about the first resolution that we?
He's talking about resolution 21, amended resolution 2109 is the resolution that is on the table right now. So that's what he's talking about.
We, we never voted to put that up on the table yet. We vote, we're, we're on the first resolution. So my point is, is are we supposed, did we vote to accept amended resolution 2109 to talk about it? Or we just going to, I'm just asking.
No. So what happened was, this, you amended this resolution at the last meeting.
Right.
So this is the resolution that you amended at the last meeting that got tabled.
But she didn't read it, though. Is she going to read it first if we're going to talk about it?
She did read this.
Not this one.
First you, first you made a motion to remove it from the table. Right now, it's removed from the table. Then Mr. Cronin did his request to withdraw. And at this point, he's got that request to withdraw amended resolution 2109. And he concurred. He needs two more concurrences to finalize the withdrawal.
Well, can't we talk about this first? Are we going to talk about this? Or are we just going to squash it?
We don't have to.
I concur.
He has the concurs, so it's, it's withdrawn, so the resolution is done.
So you guys, you guys don't want to talk about it?
So the resolution is withdrawn.
It's done, this isn't important enough to you guys.
It's done.
That's what I told you guys. I knew that would happen.
So now we move on to bills for final passage.
That's exactly how this council is. It's fantastic.
And bill number 4993.
Fuck, I'm out of here. You guys suck.
You're getting voted out.
What are we going to talk about? What are we going to talk about?
Go ahead, Claire.
All right, never mind.
Try some more. Try some more.
COVID's not going away, ever.
We can't get anywhere with the school board. We can't get anywhere with you guys. What do we do?
Useless.
This is our country. This is our county. These are our children.
They understand money. Keep your children home.
You're trapping children who can't afford driving tools into your system. It's disgusting. You should all be ashamed.
Bill number?
Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Cronin, clarify some of this.
Bill number 4993.
Hold on. Mr. White.
Can he clarify this? Why would the other resolution supersede yours? What?
Can't hear you.
What's the difference? I don't understand.
John, we can't hear you.
What do you mean? What did the resolution?
We're watching all of you.
I, I clarify it. The, the first resolution that I wrote that was introduced at the last meeting, okay? Mr. Brazel asked for a paragraph of that resolution to be removed during the meeting, okay? Which we did. That's what was on the agenda. Same resolution as before, minus one paragraph. Okay? I'd move, I, I thought we've, I think we've made significant progress. I shouldn't say we, because it was mostly to the efforts of that gentleman over there. Steve worked real hard with Mr. Carhoff, the state health director, and the school superintendents, and we have a path forward right now that I think is a good path.
But why is, why are these people disappointed? That's what I understand.
I, I can't tell you that, John. Okay? I think the resolution did what we wanted it to do. Now the school boards have something to say. Before, the school superintendents didn't really have a lot to say about it because it was mandated by the state. Now the schools can work with the, the county health department and try to figure out a policy that's best for the students' health and their education. And I think that's what Steve Elman's been after all along. Let me finish, please. We listened to you. It's time for you to listen to me. Yeah. Well, you don't know their intentions, Mary.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So what would the second, what would this other resolution do to supersede what you just did? What we just did?
The resolution that's on as a substitute? It's the same exact resolution, minus one paragraph. Really doesn't change the outcome of it any.
So if we voted for that other resolution, it wouldn't make any difference at all?
No.
It's the same thing?
It's the same thing, minus one paragraph.
So what we did tonight was really something to help everybody here.
What we, what we did, what we did, I should say, two weeks ago, got the dialogue started between the health department, state health department, the county executive, the governor, and a whole lot of other people that got involved that gives the county health department more flexibility to work with the schools to figure out quarantine orders that make more sense and will keep more kids back and keep more kids in school, yet protect their health. I think that's what the first resolution accomplished, and I'm happy with that. And the first resolution, I mean by that, I mean the resolution that we, was introduced two weeks ago. The resolution that's on here right now is the same exact resolution, minus one paragraph. It doesn't really change much.
I still want to try to understand why these people are upset because we passed a resolution, should help.
I don't know that, John.
You can ask me.
Let's move on to bills for final passage. 4993. By all means.
Bill number 4993. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to a T agricultural tourism district per application RZ 21-14.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4993. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to a T agricultural tourism district per application RZ 21-14. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Bill number 4993 passes. On to bill number 4994.
Bill number 4994. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R3B multifamily residential district and R1E single-family residential district per application RZ 21-15.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4994. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R3B multifamily residential district and R1E single-family residential district per application RZ 21-15. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes. Bill number 94, 4994 passes. Move on to bill number 9495.
Bill number 4995. An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2021.
Any questions or comments about this bill? I feel bad now that I, you walked, you came all this way and brought all those plans and we didn't even ask you. So. I'm with you.
You guys should talk to this guy.
With that, please call the roll.
Bill number 4995. An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2021. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes. Bill number 90, 4995. I can't get that out. Final bill for final passage, 4996.
Bill number 4996. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to authorize acceptance of a grant not to exceed $23,000 pursuant to project number 21-111A-1.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4996. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to authorize acceptance of a grant not to exceed $23,000 pursuant to project number 21-111A-1. Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Bill number 4996 passes. That concludes bills for final passage. On to bills for introduction, starting with bill 4997.
Bill 99, bill number 4997. Requested by Mike Gilbert, Michael Herbert, sponsored by Mike Elam. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program or Urban County CDBG Program, namely a 2021 subrecipient agreement between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we move on to 4998.
Bill, bill number 4998. Requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Mike Elam. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a seventh amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for collection of taxes.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we move on to 4999.
Bill number 4999. Requested by Dr. Mary Case, sponsored by Mike Elam. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute amendment number two to program services contract number CS 200832001 with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move to bill number 5,000.
Bill number 5,000. Requested by Mary Case, sponsored by Mike Elam. An ordinance accepting a grant for the Office of the Regional Medical Examiner, both actions as funded by a grant.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, that wraps up bills for introduction. Any action on tabled bills? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
I would like to remove bill number 4988, which is the rezoning for the land for the CUP that was turned down. I don't think we want to rezone this because of the fact that now with no CUP, we don't have any plan for that property. So I'd like to remove that from the table for a vote.
Have a motion to remove. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any discussion on this bill?
Just, this is the same property. I don't think we want to rezone it to higher commercial use without seeing what that higher commercial use would be. So I'm, it's a valuable piece of ground. I'm sure it'll come before the council again, but I think that's when we should consider rezoning again.
Any other questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4988. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from C1 neighborhood commercial district to C2 general commercial district per application RZ 21-08.
You can go ahead. No. And then read the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
I'm sorry. Whoa, whoa, time now. I'm sorry. No. I, I made a mistake.
You're voting for the rezoning.
Oh. I withdraw my vote. No.
Councilman Hammond.
No.
Councilman Elam.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilwoman Schneider.
No.
Bill number 4988 fails. Any action on 4990? Seeing none. We move on to announcements and miscellaneous. And with that, I would tell you that I need to read the Hawk Ridge Transportation Development District mail-in election results regarding funding and developing additional transportation projects. Number one, certified copy of the write-in tally sheet and certi, certificate, certificate of results received from the clerk of the circuit clerk of St. Charles County pursuant to section 238 dot 216 dot 6 of the Transportation Development District Act, also referenced in the delectatory judgment decree and order certifying the ballot question and causing a mail-in election filed on case 2011-CC00919 dated March 26, 2021. The enclosed document listed above has been filed with the records held by the county registrar and is hereby spread upon the records of the county council. Is that correct? There you go. So with that, any other announcements or miscellaneous for the evening? Mr. County Executive.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it was unfortunate the way the crowd responded to what is just a normal legislative action. If, if you have a bill, or you have a resolution, you can withdraw it anytime you want, as long as there's four other people. In fact, I'm not even sure you needed that with a resolution. If it had been an ordinance, you would have needed the four concurrence. But I mean, and I guess we can't expect these people to understand that, but that's, that is, that is just a normal, if you got your name on the bill, you have the right to do that. And I, I just feel bad for all of you because the reaction was just not appropriate. And if somebody wants to put another resolution in for the next meeting, if they do it according to your rules, there can be a vote then. So.
Sure.
Yep.
There was a lot of beside, behind-the-scenes work that Steve's done the last two weeks, and I appreciate you keeping me abreast of that. And you heard us loud and clear, and you heard these folks loud and clear two weeks ago, and you've done your best you can to get some changes. And I'm pretty happy with the progress that's been made in the last two weeks. And like I said before, it's a good start, and now it's up to you and the health department and the county, the superintendents, okay, to, to work something out that works for all the kids. And I think, I trust you guys have come up with something good. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? So I would, I would end with this. A, I echo your comments, and I appreciate the work that you've done on this. And a lady said to me after the meeting a couple weeks ago, "It just doesn't seem like you guys are really fighting for our kids." And I went back and watched the meeting, and, and I get it because we're not all making these fiery speeches and saying all this stuff. But there's a lot of work from a legislative standpoint that goes on behind the scenes. There's a lot of things that people are working on and trying to get done for the betterment of the community. And you don't always see it from a dais. This is not where most of the work gets done. It gets done behind the scenes. I also appreciate the fact that our county is not of one mind. We have different people who have different beliefs and see this differently. I mean, if you're in St. Charles City School District, you may see this different than Wentzville School District. And I wish, if we could, we could have a way where the school district could make a policy that fits what their school district parents want. We can't do that as a county. We're, we're all one county. We don't get to divide it up and cut it out that way, and you can't parse it that way. So I appreciate that not everybody's going to get what they want. But I just hope that people would understand, the seven of us who are up here all have the same goal, to provide a quality education for our kids, keep our kids in school, and keep them safe and healthy. That's the number one thing that we're trying to do. We can disagree, and people can show up here and disagree on the method that we're trying to use to get to that area. But I just hope that people understand, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want our kids to be safe. We want our kids to be healthy. We want our kids to be in school as much as they possibly can. So with that, I will stop the fiery speeches that I just talked about. Some of us give it a little different passion level than others, but the heart is still there behind it. So I appreciate all of you and all the work that you've done. You have a very confusing look on your face. Are you okay? Is there anything I need to know before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. I was looking at Claire. So I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.